We'll go ahead and call it at order the June 24th Board of Commissioners meeting. Thanks for everyone to be here. This morning, we've got Pat Kelly to give our opening prayer. Pastor Pat, good morning.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come before your throne, Father, we thank you that you will even listen to our prayers. We realize today that we are all sinners, and we all do not deserve the things that you bless us with each and every day. We thank you for another day that you have blessed us with, an opportunity to be here, to serve our community and try to help our community to work together, to live together, and hopefully worship a God. Father, we pray for our world today. It's in such conflict with one another. We pray that men will realize that killing one another will not solve our problems. We pray that as the talks go on today, that a resolution might be able to be reached and peace might become a reality. We're thankful for every blessing that you give us. We have so much here in this country. We're very thankful. Thankful for this group here that is willing to give their time this morning to discuss matters that are pertinent to our community, help them in their decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pat. Hey, first up, we've got courthouse renovation update, perhaps the last courthouse renovation update.
Yes.
Derek, how are you?
I'm doing well. Nathan, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Morning, everybody. Give you a quick update on where we're at on the courthouse. Start upstairs on the third floor. Hudson's has all the furniture installed up there. The millwork installer has completed the circuit courtroom. Looks phenomenal. The tables are in place. The countertops are done. The one last piece, I shouldn't say the millwork is done. They've got one piece left, two pieces left. The gates going to the jury box that reused from the clerk's countertop. The bars at the clerk's desk previously are being retrofitted to be gates for the jury boxes. So, once those arrive, the circuit court will be done. Outside of that-
When are you expecting those to arrive?
Those, and speaking with Tabor Owens, they should be here at the latest, I think Tuesday next week. But aside from that, the courtroom is completely functional. There's no limitations to the courtroom itself. It's just the final touch.
They can use them without the gates?
Yes. Yep. Aside from the courtroom itself, the judge's chamber is complete. The court staff, the court reporter's room is complete as well. The jury jury room is complete. On the other side of the building, the probation department, aside from paint touch-up and a few odds and ends here and there, they are complete. Moving on to the second floor, Hudson's has about 60% of the furniture installed. They're currently working in the clerk's workspace, installing all of the cubicles for that office space. Outside of that, the circuit, the Superior Court, they're doing final touches on millwork there, getting that wrapped up. They've been working in the magistrate or the referee court for the past week, getting that stuff tied together. Public restrooms are in good shape there. On the first floor, we have a little bit further to go, working through finishes, keeping contractors busy, and focusing getting through the circuit court, Superior Court, magistrate courts, and then focusing further on the first floor. That being said, the primary focus on the first floor is maintaining public entrance and exit for life safety systems. Offices are on the secondary priority there. That will allow for the building to be operable. So, we're pushing along there. Contractors are working diligently on that front. As far as security systems go, SAS has been on site for the past week. That is security automation systems. The courthouse is talking to the jail. The security system is up and running. They're going through and tweaking a few things here and there, and then working on assigning card readers, access cards for staff, internet, Dale Quackenbush, they have internet up and running as well. So, we're wireless access points. You're talking to the world from that point. Thursday, we have the state fire marshal showing up, go through some final testing, get us what we need to be able to open up this building, and start the move-in process on Monday next week. From there, financially speaking, we're in good shape there. The budget has not changed. We're still sitting at the original budget cost of $13,724,000. As far as the construction contingency, as we stand right now, it is sitting at $63,799. There are a couple of pending changes that need to be determined coming up that'll lower that contingency to $41,668. Still very good shape on that front. Another bucket of money, the soft cost budget is still where it previously was. The soft cost contingency still sits at $65,931. So, financially speaking, the project is in very good shape, considering that we're starting the move-in process next week. So, as we progress through the next couple of weeks, getting everything moved, everybody moved in, keep you guys posted. Nathan's point earlier, I sure hope this is the last progress meeting that we have. So, any questions?
Looks like we're good. Thank you. It's a cautiously exciting time.
Yes. Yes, understood.
Derek, can you remind us of the order of operations at Circuit Court?
So, the move-in process is going to be a week per department, starting with Circuit Court on the third floor. Following that will be, the following equally Superior Court. After that will be the magistrate or referee's courtroom. And then from there, it is up to the probation department or clerk's department decide who wants to go first there, either or interchangeable, for the following two weeks. And then the last process will be the prosecutors on the first floor. So, a week, week per department, keep moving through everything and keep hammering this out and get you guys moved back, get everybody moved back into their home that they're anxiously waiting for.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the meeting minutes from June 9th. Were there any changes?
Good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Motion passes. All right, on the highway meeting, Chris's won't be here today. We've got an LPA claim voucher for the old Highway 50. What's it? It's 150 West, I believe. Interchange. With, it's $4,895.65 with 90% of it reimbursables for preliminary engineering. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith. I'll second, all in favor. Motion passes 2-0. Go down the highway. Next up, I've got the health insurance. Paul and Amy, good morning. Thank you.
So, the main reason that Amy and myself are here is to secure a agreement to move forward with a different reinsurance carrier. That's the thing that we have to lock in, actually, in the next couple of days. It goes to negotiations. And so, if you look at the start here at the top, currently you have an $85,000 deductible. That's overall. Go down to laser. It says in '23, we had zero. Last year, we had one at 150. This year, we're at 150 as well. Go down to reinsurance, see where it says IISI. That's who we had last year. In IISI, actually, two years ago, IISI last year. And then, being that we're independent brokers, we can shop it around. IISI, and I'll let Amy get into some of the details on that, came in with a very, very high renewal. Made some claims, and so they wanted to maybe get their money back on one year. I don't know. But they had like a 40-some percent increase in four lasers. Those lasers amounted almost a million dollars, the lasers. Okay? But again, that's not where we're going. I'm just pointing out that we are switching reinsurance carriers, and we do need to lock that in today. And that's all we're asking for is approval to move reinsurance carriers. There's a big difference between the 46% they were wanting and the increase that Berkshire is giving us and one laser versus four. We're agreeing to stay with UMR. They're good TPA and will stay at program. I've kind of skipped around a little bit. Do you have any questions about what I'm talking about on this first page?
No.
Okay, like I said, I'll let Amy talk here in a second on some of the details. I just wanted to give you the broad view, and at the end, you know, an approval we need to move from IISI to Berkshire. I didn't know if you wanted to get into the benefits at all, or you want to wait that for another day to talk about-
I think another day for the actual benefits, because I, excuse me. Because, yeah, I don't think there's really any strong appetite. I don't want to oversimplify, but if we change benefits, that usually means taking more benefits away typically, and charging more for the existing benefits to our team members. And I don't want to be too like blanket statement of it, but I don't think there's any appetite to put too much pressure on our team members.
And that isn't really, would take effect till January 1 anyway. You're locking in a company now for next year, so to speak. And so-
Regarding the benefits in this, I mean, the only thing I would want is for UMR, is for our medical and our pharmacy providers to start consulting us on how we can get our costs down instead of just riding the gravy train and making more profit along with it, which seems to be my 11-year history, so to speak. But so, yeah, I would highly encourage our partners to provide some consulting-
Resources.
To us on what can we do to help lower our annual spend.
The only thing is you go through the benefit guide that has to be changed is the, on the HSA, the deductible has to go from $38,000 to $3,900-
Okay.
Remain in compliance. So, other than that, you know, I just want to make you aware as you're looking through that benefit guide on those type of benefits. But it's a very rich plan for the county. And I'll let Amy explain some of the details of the change, and then hopefully you'll agree to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to wrap up with that plan design, the with wellness plan would need to increase from $33,000 to $3,400 as well. So, that's the IRS minimum embedded deductible rules for next year.
Okay.
All right, so now I'm going to go through this booklet right here, the stop-loss renewal. Like Paul said, we are ultimately recommending moving reinsurance carriers, but I'll give you a little bit of context on how the plan is run over the last several years and what's leading to the increase that we are seeing. On page three, we have the historic trend report. What this is looking at is national trends. So, think of that as like medical inflation. Over the past seven years, it's been about 6.8% year-over-year. The county's trend has been about 3.6%. You can see towards the right, we have, this is based off of a stop-loss plan year, so that far right column, 2024, that's August 1st of 2024 through May 30th of 2025. So, we're looking at that many months so far, just because we like to look at this on your reinsurance plan year. If the county had run at that national trend over the seven-year period, you would have spent about $5.79 million more cumulatively over that period. We can see '24 was a bit higher or is trending a bit higher than in prior years, and that is really being driven by large claimants. On the next page, this is a look as well about just this current plan year, again, with data from August of last year through May of this year. We're running at 126% of where we expected you to be. So, we expected your claims to be about $607,000 lower than where they actually are. Your total plan spend currently is $2.9 million compared to last year was $2.3 million. It's a 25% increase year-over-year when we're comparing the same time periods. The enrollment for employees has gone down a little bit. The covered membership has gone up slightly, so we would expect slight increase in claims, but it's definitely a lot higher than expected. And again, that is being driven by the large claimants. If you look on the right side of the page, we have 14 claimants that have exceeded $42,500 in claims. That's double of what we saw last year at this time. So, 14 this year versus seven last year. Those 14 people make up about $1.36 million in claim spend, which represents about 52% of your overall claims for this period. So, because of that, we're looking at a pretty large loss ratio, leading to the high renewal from your current incumbent reinsurance carrier. That's why shopping every year is important. We went to a lot of different carriers, which I'll go through on the next page, but the only other thing I'll comment on page four is that we're expecting the reimbursements to the county to be about $320,000 so far for these four claimants who have actually exceeded that specific deductible. Any questions before we jump into the reinsurance details?
I mean, on the large claimants, is there any, does the payer have any control in where they get care at? I mean, if two hospitals, let me rephrase that. If two hospitals have provided the exact same service, let's just call it an MRI, and one's $2,000 and one's $1,000, and an MRI is an MRI. Can the large claimant choose the more expensive MRI provider?
As it stands, yes, because we don't have any sort of financial incentive or a narrow network to steer them otherwise.
Okay. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to decrease care at all, but just being in this space somewhat, you know, some services are apples to apples, but they, these health systems own all the supply chain. So, they control where you get your labs, where you get your diagnostics, and that's where they really make their margins at. So, and then if so, who would help facilitate that?
So, we could explore different options with UMR or potentially look at a direct contracting relationship. I know we've worked with Davis Community Hospital to do some direct contracting from the benefit fair, the biometric screenings, if you will, the wellness kind of fair that we have. We could, we could look to see if there could potentially be some steerage there. But with UMR utilizing their broad United Healthcare Network, they tend to have what we call anti-steerage language built into their provider contracts, meaning that unless you have a specific arrangement written into that provider contract that allows a narrow network, they don't typically allow steerage through the plan.
Let's, let's look at what a narrow network would look like, who the providers would be, what the cost difference would be. And then if the employee wants to use a higher-cost same-service provider, then perhaps they pay that difference.
Okay. Yep, we can explore that.
At what timeframe can we look at receiving something? And I'm not rushing you. I just want to make a note.
Yeah, I would say give us probably a month to explore those different options with United Healthcare. I mean, we'll get working on it right away, but sometimes-
So, the first meeting in August would give you six weeks?
That should be fine, yep.
Okay. Can we make a reminder on that? Thank you. All right, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And there are some other opportunities from prescription drug side as well that we can bring up in that August meeting that Paul and I have been working with TRR-X on.
Okay.
So, we can bring some other ideas to that meeting as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Me versus trend, we're doing extremely well.
Yes, you are. You've had a couple of good renewals too. Just, so I'll move on to page six, but last year, when we were locking in the reinsurance last year, we actually got a slight decrease. We had about a 1% decrease renewal last year from IISI. Prior to that, we had a 3.4% increase. So, the last couple of years, we've done well from the increased perspective on the stop-loss. This year, as Paul mentioned on page six, so we have your current renewal columns on the two columns on the left. Like Paul said, we got a pretty high increase to start. So, a 33% increase on the fixed cost. But the real difference was the lasers, which you can see at the very bottom. So, there's over $700,000 in additional laser liability that you would have. You would still obviously hit the specific deductible on each of those people. So, you'd have to do the math to do the, for instance, $150,000 minus the $85,000. That's how we get to that additional liability row. Towards the bottom, it says 785. In the renewal, we only have a $65,000 additional liability for the competitive quote from Berkshire Hathaway. So, we went out to several different carriers. We got 13 declinations, just because your rates are so low, they couldn't be competitive. We did get a few competitive quotes. Obviously, the most competitive being Berkshire Hathaway, which is that one that's in the red box. So, about a 22% increase to fixed cost. If we look at your total fixed cost, which includes UMR admin fees, consulting fees, your organ transplant carve-out policy, all of those things combined with the reinsurance, we're looking at just over $118,000 increase year-over-year on the fixed cost. So, beyond that, we can look at what your expected cost is from what the insurer is expecting your-
So, Amy, on this total annual cost, is that, is that our total annual cost?
Yes.
Is that, that 3.5 million, is that for 12 months?
3.5.
On the first column, current?
Oh, the first column. Yes, that's an annualized cost.
So, that's 12 months?
Yeah, and that's your maximum. So, that is, you purchase aggregate insurance as well, right, which is kind of that umbrella coverage?
Okay.
So, that would be worst-case scenario. That would be your maximum.
So, is that what we're currently spending?
The 3.5? No, you're less than that right now. I mean, we'll see kind of where the year ends up. Right now, we're at 2.9 million. That is with claims and fixed costs. We have June, July, August, three more months left of claims that would go through that. But aggregate insurance is not reconciled until after a full year's worth of claims. So, we won't know whether or not, even if you trend towards that number, we won't know if you'll have an aggregate claim until after the plan year is ended.
Right at 2.9?
You're at 2.9 with data through May.
So, it's 3.86 annualized. Okay. Just trying to do some math here. Based off that amount and divided by 104 employees, that's about $19,000 a year that the county pays. I'll only mention that because insurance is that hidden benefit that no one sees. Because some of our team members make $30,000, $35,000. Yet then they get this silent $19,000 benefit that, you know, it's and now we're going from 3.8, now we're going to go to 4.4 a million. So, therefore, and then we're going to absorb all that as a county. It's my speculation. I would doubt if we would, if the commissioners would increase the premiums to them, but it's just a very rich benefit that people just need to be reminded of, because we get hammered on salaries a lot. But then, and that's why we talked in a benefits meeting on how ideally, how do we increase the salaries, increase the cost of insurance, and then make it net out the same to the team member? But, you know, they're not really making 38. They're really making 45 if they pay the same as what people pay in the private sector. So, and I'm not diminishing what the team members do or what they're getting. I'm just trying to, when we hide stuff, it's just hard to know what you get. So.
So, overall, we're looking at a monthly, or I'm sorry, the maximum liability of that 4.46. That is worst-case scenario. If you hit the aggregate insurance and if your laser of $150,000 actually hits that laser, so that's a 22% increase year-over-year. But again, that is sort of your worst-case scenario. You're more likely to be in that expected liability area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I do have a couple of footnotes at the bottom as well. So, like I mentioned before, 13 carriers declined a quote. We converted stop-loss commission from a percentage to a PPM, which is reflected in this to be a more streamlined cost year-over-year. And then the fixed cost, the total fixed cost includes an enhanced gene therapy program that covers 15 different drugs that range from $500,000 to $3.5 million. So, this is just an enhanced stop-loss protection. In case you do get one of those expensive gene therapy drugs hitting your plan, you basically will be reimbursed from dollar one.
And how many quoted again? 13 declined? How many?
So, 16 total, not including the incumbent.
Three and 13, or 16 and 13?
So, we have, on this page, we have four different carriers plus 13 additional that kind of quote.
Seventeen total.
If you count the incumbent. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think now we just would love your approval to lock in this renewal with moving to Berkshire Hathaway.
Mike, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, no. Just kind of take your lead on that.
Okay. Yeah, currently, I mean, we basically can pay more and go with another option.
Yeah.
Or pay less and go with the option recommended with Berkshire. So, I'd entertain a motion to go with option one with the Berkshire Hathaway as the stop-loss carrier.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith. I'll second, all in favor. Say aye. Motion passes 2-0.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the information. Very helpful.
That's what the new, the new number means.
Right. Morning, Laura. How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good. You probably enjoy going after the insurance, because now yours is easy.
There's a lot of information, but it's good to hear. Like, it's stuff I didn't even know about. So, like you said, it's a hidden benefit for a lot of people.
This is one reason why we scrutinize adding FTEs so heavily, because it's not the salary we're concerned about. It's the $21,000 per employee cost.
Like the hidden benefit.
And then those hidden lasers, which, you know, a team member could cost $150,000, which if they do, they do.
Thank goodness we have them too to do all that work for the county.
Excellent. So, what you got for us today?
This is the seventh year for the Justice Partners Addictions Response Grant. I got an email just last week. They always kind of do it last minute, like there might be more funding. If you're interested in applying, you have to apply by July 2nd. So, I've already drafted the grant, as you can see. I kind of just go off year after year and just build it, build it up from things that we've done. Usually, for five years, I would get, I got $60,000. Last year, I only got 45. So, this year, I'm only requesting 35. But this year, they didn't put an amount that would be available at each county. So, I just kind of based it off of what I've been spending and the trends of what I've actually spent. I only had to send back, I think, $5 last year on the grant. So, I have probably about $20,000 remaining that I need to spend by September. So, I don't know if I'll spend all that. So, if I don't spend all that, I'll have to send it back, and my amount that I'm asking for may not get granted, and it may not get granted at all. So, I just thought I'd ask again, just to see if I can help support the peer recovery organizations in town and-
Sure. Sure. I mean, my only request is on these grant dollars. Grant dollars are great, but these are, these are tax dollars in almost all cases. So, I would just ask that you continue spending the money wisely and not just find a reason to spend it, because then that becomes an incurred expense, and then that's harder for the council to turn down the second year when you're already doing it. And then ultimately, the county ends up paying for some of this stuff. So-
Yeah, usually what I've been putting it towards is community outreach programs, help support evidence-based materials for the peer recovery programs and for community corrections. So, that's less money out of my budget also. And just training for the peer recovery that they don't have to spend. So, I don't even know if I'll get it, but I'm going to ask for it. So.
Any questions, Mike?
No, that's, everything's good.
Okay, great. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith. I'll second, all in favors. Aye. Motion passes 2-0. Thanks, Laura.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks Laura.
Okay, next up, we got the art, the 200 North Proposal for Closure. Just quickly as a recap, going back to 2022, we were working with Ed Hartsburg and Matt Hubelar with REO. So local landowners leased their ground to mine and then they needed to come through 200 North. So in order to not jeopardize that private land transaction, and it was a good, good program. We, we agreed to close 200 North from 350 East over a section for 30 months. So that started December of 2022 is when we signed that deal. The coal mine took six months to close that road. So they came back to me in July of '23 and said, hey, does the 30-month clock start now? And I was a little aggravated with them, I'll admit. And I said, no, it started in December when we signed it and it's your fault that it took you six months to close it down. So it's probably been a little stubborn, a little hard on them, so. They're needing a few more months because they've lost a customer on. And all you elected officials in the crowd, you know, all you go on is with what you're told, right? So some is regurgitating with what I've been told. So they've lost a customer, so therefore the production decreased, so therefore their migration southward slowed down. So they asked if they could have the original 30 months of road closure. So I had two new soft commissioners, I couldn't be the hard guy all the time, so. No, I'm teasing. So I, we, we agreed to, to go ahead and let them have the 30 months of road closure pending that there's a cut-around road put in place by December. So theoretically, you know, traffic can get through there if, if need be, so. So we got a new agreement here that basically extends the deadline to December of '25, a pending that they, they pay more, so they're going to deposit an additional amount into our escrow account. They're going to construct a runaround road by December '25. They're going to increase the bond. They're going to go ahead and prepay us for 500 East to be resurfaced. And then any sort of legal bills we had to let, to redo this agreement, they're going to pay. And then there's also penalties in there by the month. If they go past January, there's a, there's a fine per month, so to speak, of not having that road put back in place, so. So anyway, a lot of information, but I just want to kind of give you guys the backstory for that so that a year from now, we can at least go back and pull this meeting up if we need to and have some of the historical context. So the only question we really have is the bond amount. This is really the amount of money we get if the, if the coal mine cannot put that road back. This is what we use to put the road back, so. So what, what we need to do, just from some discussion with the commissioners and grant, we need to get with Chris to see how much is that road going to cost to put back in? And then determine what is an appropriate bond amount, so.
But it does seem like all the other terms are generally agreeable.
Yeah, does seem like everyone's agreeable. We want to be cooperative, we've really, we really have been cooperative, so we're not trying to be difficult to work with.
Just recently, they sent over another document, so we'll just have to vet that against what you all are comfortable with and.
I agree, that, that existing bond needs to be considerably higher.
Okay. All right, well, I will reach back out to them just after I talk with Chris to see what an appropriate amount is and then. So assuming that, because the, the current deal expires, I think, June 28th, if I got that date right, at the end of this month. So what I would like to do is entertain a motion to approve this pending that we get to an agreeable bond amount that Chris is comfortable with. And if Chris is comfortable with the, the new, the higher bond amount, then allow him and I to go ahead and transact the deal because we're going to miss the four days, we're going to be past the expiration date. So approve it pending that.
I'll make the motion.
You okay with that? Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Keith, I'll second, all in favor say aye. A motion passes 2-0. All right, I'll get on that today. All right, then we go from that to, to the covered bridge certification. We have no covered bridges in Davis County, and this is just a certification that we have to fill out for that. So the life of a commissioner. Any questions on the covered bridge certification?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith, I'll second, all in favor say aye. Motion passes 2-0. Okay, next up, we got the statement of, let's see, Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly, annual information. This is the, all the net assessed value for Davis County. The total taxable value for 2025 was 2 millions.
Two billion.
2,73 million. And that's up from 1.9 billion, so let's call it 250,000-ish, 150,000-ish, 150 million-ish, too many zeros, increase in assessed value. The property tax rates, and again, it's fifth grade math. The higher the AV, the lower the tax rates, but you can still be paying more on the right side of the equal sign. But the good news is, we do want to see tax rates decrease. 2025, the tax rate for Davis County total was 0.74, and that's down from 0.77, and it was 0.89 in 2021, so. That's definitely going in the right direction. A lot of this stuff's kind of hard to read. And we're, and this is kind of interesting, the dispersments, people always, how does the county spend $20 million a year? And, and that's always interesting. So 4.1 million is the commissioners, and now that 4.1 million, our insurance friends, or about 3 million of that. The security center is 4 million, county sheriff's 2.4 million, superior courts 1.1, circuit courts 1 million. Community corrections 760,000, capital improvement 1.5 million. So basically, the, the thing about it is it's all lined out here on exactly where the money goes, and my approximation is 30 to 40% of it's for the judicial system in some form or fashion. Fighting crime is expensive, so the better we all behave, the lower your property taxes are. So straighten up out there, I guess, I don't know, so.
Let me talk about, if you want to, our largest taxpayer, the TIF. The, the debt associated with that has gone away.
Yeah, so we did have a TIF, we have had a TIF in place since really 1999, the GPC TIF. So all of GPC's tax, property taxes has been kind of diverted away, so to speak, to pay for the bonds on that TIF district. So the last bond has just recently been paid off a couple of months ago so that now the GPC TIF district is, is no longer encumbered by a bond. So now the county has to decide whether to dissolve that TIF district or is there another capital project that benefits GPC? And so, but worst, worst, worst-case scenario, January of '28, that district is gone forever, if not this year, so. And then that will be a net improvement to all property taxpayers, probably around 9% once that AV is brought into our net AV, so. So some good things go in there as well, so good things ahead. But that's where we're watching our costs because the commissioners and the insurance is our number-one line item of anything in the county, so. But a lot of good information here, are there any questions?
Action, do we?
No.
So I would entertain a motion then just to accept the annual information of continued disclosure compliance for fiscal year ended 2024.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith, I'll second, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes 2-0. All right, then we got the statement of salaries. Benefit of being a public employee is you get to tell everyone how much you make. So there's a statement of salaries in here somewhere.
Yes, and that is this, per IC code, that that is given to you guys based off of positions before that, as they're preparing their budgets for this year. So this is what the increases for the projections of 2026.
Yeah, I just don't see the actual document, but.
I don't think we've printed the actual documents.
Okay.
There's a lot.
There, yeah, it's big, so I'd entertain a motion to accept the statement of salaries.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith, I'll second, all in favor say aye. Motion passes 2-0. Okay, what else, chief?
I think that's it.
Is there anything, anything from the crowd? Ladies?
I think they're all asleep.
Yeah, no kidding. All right, I'd entertain a motion to prove payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith, I'll second, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. Have a great week, everyone.